This world, she's like.
I'm going to sign off the.
Capital A. You want to tweet about this?
Welcome to.
Oh, I'll pass on the.
With respect to.
Go ahead and call this meeting of the Eugene Planning Commission's order. Do we have anybody in the audience wishing to speak on something from the appeal before us? Moving right along then.
Oh, yes, so we're here today to deliberate on the. On the Goodpasture Greenway permit appeal and. And so I wanted to start off and let you know that we made a couple of very minor changes to the final order that you have a draft that came with your agenda and made it three changes to it, basically just correcting the date at the bottom of page one. We had April 15th instead of 25th and then on page nine. Fixed the, it was under assignment of error 10, we had it saying that we have, that it affirms assignment of error nine and changed that to 10, so it was correct. And then on page. Let's see here. And then on page three, added a sentence at the end of. The second paragraph on page three, they're just saying that if there's a conflict between the hearing's official decision and the final order, that the final order would be the one you, that would overrule, so.
You know, sorry, I downloaded one. My numbers don't seem to match.
Yeah. Oh, and I'm sorry, I was looking at the, I was looking at the new one, so let me go back to, so the. So the first. Let's see, the first one was the last paragraph on page one, it was just fixing the, excuse me, page.
Page one of the final order, page seven of the packet?
It would be, yes, thank you.
From April 15th.
Of the packet.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah.
In the fourth full paragraph that begins with the word after, you see a reference to April 15th, that's the 25th.
So we fixed that. And then on. Page nine of the.
Page three of the packet, under Roman numeral four, findings of fact and conclusions as law.
AIS page.
Yep.
AIS page nine. A sentence is added that reads, "In the event of a conflict, the planning commission's final order controls over the hearing's official decision." Could you do the last one because I'm not there?
Okay, and the last one is on page 15 of the, of the AIS. And it is bottom paragraph, it, third sentence from the end, it says, "Appellant's ninth assignment of error," we changed that to 10th as it's actually under the 10th. It is right.
It's in the very bottom, two lines up.
Okay, and so then we were hoping to approach this as, we kind of saw, I think, out of the public hearing that there are two or three main issues and so depending on preference, we were hoping that maybe we could start with the kind of the media issues and those being the, the location of the, the river in relation to the criterion. There's, that's important and I guess the first appeal item, the second, or the assignments of error, the first, second, eighth, 10th, and 11th, that kind of comes up over and over again as an issue, so we're hoping to maybe take that one on and then also kind of in that same context, there's the discussion about the greenway setback and the greenway boundary and then also, and then next look at assignment of error seven, which is the WR, we're guessing there'll be some more, more discussion surrounding that one and then, and then as you have items that arise, I know you're looking at geotechnical issues also, we could look at those and, and kind of go from there and the, but before that there was an issue that the, the Goodpasture Partners asked to, they made a motion to dismiss the, the appeal and so on the, on your, let me see, page. See where I can find it here. Oh, it's in the AIS, I just know, on page. Four of the AIS, so it'd be the, right on the back, your agenda item summary. We recommend that the, the planning commission doesn't just dismiss the item, given that while there is code criteria that kind of sets a bar for what you're required to submit for an appeal, that it doesn't give you, it doesn't say what happens if they don't do that, so and the Goodpasture Partners asserted that the appeal statement that Willamette Oaks submitted, you know, didn't meet the bar and that it should therefore just dismiss the item, we thought that because it doesn't give you a consequence if they don't address it, we thought that it would be much better if the planning commission went ahead and addressed all the, the appeal items, so.
I can support staff's recommendation on that. When we first received packet prior to our public hearing, I was one who thought we hadn't received really any information at all in that document, it just listed the errors, but then we received submittal at the public hearing from the appellant, which gave me reason to believe that we should go ahead and go through each of the issues, so I support staff's recommendation.
Commissioners in favor of moving forward?
Yeah, let's go.
Addressing issues?
So with that, we can go ahead and start with the appeal issue, or excuse me, assignment, the first assignment of error, which is. Oh, yes, sorry.
That's okay. Steve asked if I would just really quickly run through what we always kind of run through before you conduct an appeal deliberation and that is the confines of your review and just to remind you that when we are coming to you with an appeal from a hearing's official, you have an on the record appeal, so no new evidence is allowed in from time to time as you deliberate, when you ask us questions, we may kind of rein you in and tell you we can't go into that because that particular, I, would require us to talk about something that's not on the record already. Also, we have interpreted the code as limiting your scope of review so that the only issues that you are asked to deliberate on today are those that were specified as appeal items by the appellant. There are plenty of them, so I don't think you're going to have any shortage of items to talk about, I think there are 12 today, but we'll, if you start looking into issues that weren't raised as appeal items, we may help you kind of rein in on that issue too. The questions you should be asking yourself on each appeal issue are whether the, did the hearing's official improperly evaluate the application or did the hearing's official make a decision that's inconsistent with a criterion? If you conclude that the hearing's official did improperly evaluate the application or did make a decision that's inconsistent with one of the criteria, then you need to explain your conclusion, why do you think so, and either reverse or you can modify. There's also an option for sending a decision back to the hearing's official, but that's only available to you if the applicant's given you enough time in the 120 days. At this point, we haven't gone down that road, but if you feel that's, that's really what should happen in a particular case, staff can investigate that.
All right, thank you. Okay, with that, let's go ahead and look at the first assignment of error and so in, in this first assignment, what the, the hearing's official kind of used that also as the platform to describe where, where the project was in relation to river and what he saw as the, where, when it refers to the river, the, where that was in relation to project and the first assignment of error actually asserted that the project is located entirely within the river and then cites several criterion where that's applicable. And the hearing's official relied on basically the, the WAP and the, in discussing that, saying that, you know, it's not referred to as the river and doesn't talk about former river channels, that this, the location of the project while in the greenway was not in the river, so.
Commissioners have discussion on this?
Yeah, frankly, when I read the position that it's the setback, that the bridge is within the river area for the setback, I had to stop and think where that river was in relation to this because this I've always, as familiar as I am with this particular bridge, it's over Delta Highway. So I found it interesting as I dug into the, the evidence presented by the appellant, the concept that we're talking about old river channels and, you know, I, in past years, I served on the Lane County Willamette River Greenway Advisory Committee, the Willacansy Refinement Plan, and I never recall ever any discussion about Dedrick Slough and Delta Ponds as being part of the river. I found it an interesting argument, but I thought the hearing's official digging into the plans as he did, validated what I think is the common understanding of where the river is and that's the main west channel, as pointed out by Mr. Mickey, even just on the surface of it, Willamette River versus Dedrick Slough and Delta Ponds, I think the hearing's official made the right call.
Yeah, I agree with Randy, particularly there was discussion in here about, actually it came out of a prior greenway permit project that went on that actually is now somewhat being finished up where there's a discussion in there about how these ponds were actually developed as quarries and then later. Later has gone through an improvement to make it more of a recreational habitat area, so on, and the idea that if we went back to the old channels of the Willamette, I don't know where that really would be or how you would map it because I'm going to guess if we went back enough years, it was probably pretty much anywhere in the valley at the time, so I think, I'm comfortable with the hearing's officer's decision on that. There also was a discussion about the Willacansy refinement, Willacansy area plan and there was this discussion in a citing in the appellate's document regarding that. And he talked, and I believe it's an error in the document, they talked about the neighborhood design, I'm on page four of Mr. Mickey's document, he refers to the neighborhood design elements, web page 44, in fact, that's the Land use document, sub, subarea section, I believe, because the quote actually comes right from that and as you read that whole section under Gillum, subarea, it really seems to be, excuse me, under Goodpasture, subarea, it really talks more about the area that's actually north of Valley River Center and is referring to those areas which, and how to deal with that, so that even to me even supported more that, that the WAP wasn't really referring to the greenway area over where this project is planned, but really more sort of north of where the car areas are, the dealerships and so on and so forth, so I'm with Randy, I think that there is strong support in the documents referred to and the testimony that really we should consider the river as the existing channel of the current.
Are we doing a thumbs up kind of thing, just?
How do you want to deal with this?
How do you want to?
Yeah.
That works, we could, or head nods or.
Okay.
I mean, I guess I have a procedure question on this, there's, as you said earlier, there's a lot of issues that deal with the concept of the river. We make a determination on one here that we believe the river is actually the Willamette challenge, excuse me, the channel of the current Willamette River, how do we deal with subsequent appeal issues? Do they become mute?
We could, if you, unless you feel they don't, like if there was, if you still had concerns about others, even, and I don't know, I'd prefer to move, once we move through the media issues, we could either, you know, take a little time to quickly run through the others or to see if there's.
I think one, one option might be, I think you mentioned that this also relates to appeal issues two, eight, 10, and 11.
Yeah.
And I guess I'd present that question to the commissioners, so if you have particular concerns beyond the discussion you just had under item one, related to any of those other appeal issues, we could talk about that, otherwise I think you could affirm as a package if you're comfortable with that.
I guess I would like to get to those issues, but I think part of what we have typically done on these in the past is, there's some areas that I think we might be able to strengthen our findings if the rest of the commission agrees. And I'd like to at least present some of that as we go through these different appeal issues.
So you're more favored doing them as a lump or just going through them step by step?
I'd like to talk about each one of them. Even if the determination is that the river is the channel, the existing channel, I'd like to at least talk about them, so if they go to appeal, there may be some more information within those that would be considered at another level.
I think that's wise, I think these guys have kind of given you a roadmap, you may want to skip around a bit to have your head on that issue, you might want to go in that, address those first, but keep in mind that some of these deal with the setback from the greenway boundary and some of them deal with the river and so I think some discussion around that might be clarifying for you.
So what if, I don't know, maybe this doesn't help, but what if we just go through and clarify the big issues and then we'll go through and do details beyond that? Is that sound okay?
Okay, great.
So we got, we got the river taken care of?
Yeah, and I think maybe a follow-up to that, we could move to number two, it's, it's not quite the same, it's not, it's, it deals with the greenway setback in this one, while they're, they're closed, they're a little different and we can work through that one and then maybe skip to the WR and then, and then come back and hit them all if that's, if that works, okay? Okay, so the next, second assignment of error then relates to the first one in that the appellant claims that the transportation improvements must be within the greenway setback and require a goal exception because it's within the river channel, that was one of the arguments made and so the, the hearing's official clarifies that the project is within the Willamette Greenway, but not within the setback established in the Willacansy area plan, which is 35 feet from the riverbank and that relates to the first one because the hearing's official was saying the riverbank is a long ways away. So that's where the, that's the findings hearing's official put in under the second assignment of error.
Are there additional comments about that?
Nope.
Should we move on to the water resources?
Sure.
Want to throw a couple more that pertain to the river, like eight and nine?
I was wondering if we would want to, if there was any skipping around to do at this point, maybe we try to hit the river.
Okay.
Channel related ones, does that make sense to everybody?
Nine and Willamette. Yeah, that's what I asked, procedure, do you want to talk about the big tickets, then go back and deal with each, each of the 12 issues or when we get to them here, do you want sort of our addition to what I, at least a discussion or strength of issue at this point?
We could go ahead and.
And I'd find any way you want to do it.
We could go ahead and skip to those that relate to the river for now and then once, when, then we can start back at the beginning and say, okay, we've discussed this one already and.
Okay, because I have some discussion about some additional information, I think that would be supportive of some of the findings as we go through these.
Okay.
I can do it, any way you want to do it.
Okay, let's go ahead.
Are any of those on the first or the second assignments of error?
Yes.
You want to get those?
Yeah, let's go ahead and get those in and.
I'm okay doing that, but I think some of them are going to take a little while to discuss and again, if you think that we need to deal with sort of the, sort of the higher level issue to start with and then come back, it may also, that discussion may remove some of my thoughts about strengthening some of the things, so again, I'm happy to.
Okay, well, let's go ahead then and talk about the, I guess, the three other assignments of error that, that deal with the location of the river or, or related to that, then we can move on to WR and then we can go ahead and just start at the beginning and, is that sound okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so then the next one that related to, or that includes findings that related to the location of the river were under the eighth assignment of error and. Basically, there's a criterion that talks about the open space between the activity and the river and so again, that related to the location of the river, if it was considered in the river channel, that would, you'd have to look at it a different way than if it was as the hearing's official put it, 3,200 feet from the river, so. Is there any questions in regards to that, eighth one?
Actually, I think it's probably more for anyone. In some of the statutes, we talk about intensification, change of use, and development, and then we get here and we talk about activity and like, and the way I read it is I would say that they are somewhat synonymous with each other, but I'm not sure that's true and so to me, an activity is something that's ongoing and happening, not you build a building and you call that an activity, so I guess I'm looking for a little clarity of what you believe the code is trying to tell me there.
I don't think it's, I think it's a little unclear and I don't, I wouldn't rule out that there's some overlap between these, I think it's trying to capture, I mean, I think there's no question that what's proposed here would be a development or an activity, so I don't know that you need to, I don't know if that matters, the issue here, I mean, distance seems to be the controlling factor here, so I think you get off the hook and I don't know that you need to make an interpretation, but I don't, those aren't terms that are defined and it would.
Well, the term development's defined the code, but none of the rest are.
Right.
And if it helps, I believe that all, that language comes from statute as well, so the terms were not something we intentionally tried to develop for different meanings, we're taking that from the statute.
Probably the goal even.
Right, or the goal, I'm sorry.
So is everybody fine with the eighth assignment of error? Okay, let's go ahead and move on to the ninth one then with, and that one relates to public access to and along the river and again, as the hearing's official found, the river was 3,200 feet away, he addressed it in that manner, saying that the, the intervening land were the ones that actually provided access to the river, so. Is there any questions on the ninth assignment of error? Okay. And I'm just trying to see what the, if the 10th one has anything, I had it written down as one that also.
That's WR, Willamette is the other one.
Right.
Okay, and the, so if you go to, it's page 16, the 11th assignment of error. And again, the hearing's official in this case, and then there's several standards in this assignment of error that the hearing's official addressed and it had to do with public and pedestrian bicycle access along the river, then walls and facades and their relationship to the river and the protection of fish and wildlife and so for the, for a couple of the standards, the location of the river is again very important because that's the, kind of the scope the hearing's official addressed it through, so. Any questions on the 11th one? Okay, let's go ahead and move on to number seven then, which is the water resource assignment of error. And so there was a several, within the one assignment of error, there were several arguments that were made by the appellant, how the, the crux of it was that the, was the assertion that Goodpasture was within the setback of the, the WR setback and that they hadn't gone through the right process and that they shouldn't be allowed to proceed in the setback and so I guess what happened again was that the, the applicant submitted a Willamette Greenway permit with a standard review initially with a letter, or with a non-concurd with delineation and later upon finding out that the, how long a delineation would take, they withdrew the standard review and went to their second option within the code, which was to go with the goal five setback and so the, the hearing's official actually put a condition in because there were still some maps left over that led, lent to some confusion and so he put a condition in asking to clarify or for the applicant to show more clearly in their application materials, but then he also found that indeed, it was clear enough that they were with, outside the setback if you looked at the goal five resource as it was mapped and that they weren't somehow required to submit the concurred with delineation and, and so that was kind of the, the crux of the hearing's officials' findings in this case and then we also, the Alder Woods PUD appeal was raised and there's. in this case. And then we also, the Alder Woods PUD appeal was raised and there's some, not additional findings, but there's an acknowledgement in the final order that yes, that was the case, but it was, in this case, it's different because it's a wetland resource, not a riparian resource as we dealt with in Alder Woods. And so with that, if there's questions or discussion?
Yeah, Steve, I'm curious what it is you're asking us to clarify. In the most recent AIS from April to today's AIS on page 13, the next to the last paragraph says, "Given this distinction, the planning commission clarifies its interpretation to state that the two-part process set forth in Alder Woods is not applicable to wetland resource sites." I know, I'm not quite sure what we're getting at there.
Okay. I think what that is doing is in the Alder Woods final order, it's not clear that the process set forth in that decision is only for riparian. While there's discussion about it, it's never clearly stated. And so that would, that would just be setting this apart from that one. I don't know if that's-
This clarification, as far as I can tell, has got no bearing on whether or not the hearings official heard or not.
That's true. May I?
Yes.
So Commissioner Lettich, the WR provisions set out, encompass two types of resources as I'm sure you remember. There's riparian corridor or upland wildlife habitat sites. It's actually three. Those are kind of grouped together. And then there's wetland sites. One section of the code talks about how you determine the boundaries of riparian corridors and upland wildlife habitat sites. That was the section that we went into great depth on in previous decisions, including Alder Woods, about how to measure in top of high bank and all that. A later section within that larger code provision as a sort of companion for water features identified as wetlands and talks about how you measure from them in a totally, in a different way, offers the applicant this option of delineate, you know, whether they rely on the goal five map or delineated wetlands. Alder Woods was really all about the code sections that measure for riparian and upland. And so reliance on that analysis for wetlands really doesn't make sense. It's much, the code is actually a lot clearer and easier to apply for wetlands.
That's what you're getting at.
And so I think staff want to make sure because we do, while we're not bound to our precedent, it's great for us to build a library of your decisions we can look back to. And this helps clarify here that we're not actually relying on the analysis that was so clearly set out for riparian and upland in Alder Woods, that we're relying on subsection two of the code.
We're not undoing Alder Woods.
No.
We're just referring to the appropriate portion for wetlands.
The key word in the sentence that you read was actually, is not applicable to wetland resource sites.
Okay.
As opposed to-
Okay.
And we did approach it in the final order in a, in a way that, you know, we're not modifying hearings official's decision. I think that they're characterized as additional findings that you'll be making to sort of portray that distinction, not that you found error or are resolving any error from the hearings official's decision.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm in agreement with that because I know during that hearing, which I was part of, we really dealt with the resource for Alder Wood versus any wetland resource. So I don't believe there was any intent for us to deal with wetlands in that whole deliberation we were dealing with the first section that you were discussing there.
But just to be sure, the wetlands process does give the applicant the choice of either going with the goal five wetland line or provided as-
Yeah, the choice isn't available for riparian and upland.
Gotcha.
Because of course, there is no jurisdictional wetland boundary.
Right, right. I understand. Okay, okay.
And I've been noticing too, you have this emphasis on if provided by the owner, the ODSL delineation. Is that something we're adding into that? I don't recall seeing it as an issue.
It's, yeah, it's in there because it's in the code section. We did highlight it here in that just because it was, just for clarification purposes, that that was one of the choices.
So regardless of the fact that they have a ODSL determination from good pasture, it's not from the property owner. So therefore, what they have wouldn't be applicable in this application anyway.
That's correct.
The code, I'm getting the look. Would you let me read the code?
Well, no, I had the same thought across my mind that Heidi made. But on the other hand, the applicant is representing the owner. So does that link it back?
I think if they had come in with the, and submitted one on behalf, on behalf of Lane County, that-
But they pulled it, that's their option. So it's off the table.
Yes, and they never did.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, they never did what?
They never did submit the concurred with delineation as part of their application. Yeah, it was kind of, that was highlighting that technically it would have to be the property owner that submitted.
Good catch, Heidi.
Stick your fingers out.
Well, I'm kind of with Randy on this issue, or maybe I'm not with him, but I have a curiosity question. If we say that an applicant can submit information as representative of an owner for some reason, then how do you, how do you distinguish between the two? In one situation where it's an application or something, and it's another when you're talking about submittal of information?
Would you get a signature, just the same way that they got a signature permission?
Well, you don't get permission, is my understanding. Once you supply an application and you go through the completeness review and supply all the information necessary, you don't sign every document that comes through the door as an owner or representative. The application is that representation of who's supplying all this work. So I mean, I agree that, I think the code says you can do either one of these and I'm okay with saying that. But to sort of indicate that the property owner in this situation is somebody different than the applicant, and that's why you can't, I have an issue with that emphasis.
They would have to authorize the ODSL approval, which they never did, is how I understood that.
It was eventually concurred with, or ODSL did give approval of it.
Right, but Lane County didn't necessarily say, we want, we want to take that approval and say it comes from us.
No, they didn't in this case.
Or they weren't ever approached to do that anyway.
And, you know, in reality, in this case, we never, we haven't got to that question.
It's a theoretical discussion. I mean, we could, we could dive into it deeper, but I don't know that it's really relevant to the outcome here. I mean, had that played out in terms of property owner versus applicant, we'd probably have a different set of facts or evidence here, but it's really not.
Mine is the emphasis part of this.
And we can revise that if you'd like.
If you, this is sort of, this whole property owner issue has come up in the context of this appeal. But if you kind of take a step back and look at the code provisions we're talking about, it was a great deal of work that went into our establishment of our own goal five locally significant wetland mapping. And so this provision says, "Conservation setback distances for wetlands are measured horizontally from wetland boundaries established under the goal five locally significant wetland sites within the Eugene urban growth boundary map." So our map. Or, if you don't like that, is the subtext, "If provided by the property owner from the jurisdictional wetland boundary accepted by the Oregon Department of State lands." So I mean, I think when this was drafted, it wasn't, it wasn't really with an emphasis on giving everybody a choice. It offered the choice if for one reason or another, somebody didn't, wanted to challenge the location of the wetland on the goal five boundary. Wouldn't you agree? So it really wasn't written with all, be mindful of these questions about who submitted it and did it, you know. And so it's not, analyzing that question is interesting, but it's not really going to be answered in the context of this provision.
I think it's only interesting because the appellant raises the owner, owner applicant question to begin with. And Heidi's right on point here. It talks about owner, not applicant submitting this thing, but you're right.
And that's in this context.
So it's, yeah.
Cut on to that also, which is-
Interesting.
I think we should de-emphasize it in that.
Well, I, yeah, I mean, I agree. Because I think in my mind, every application I've ever seen come through, it's not always just the property owner. It's a, it's a person representing possibly the property owner. And I mean, just to be consistent throughout the way we handle everything, I don't think it was intended here to mean truly quote the property owner. I think it meant, you know, I couldn't go out and have a study done on your property and give it in and you have nothing to do with it all. And that was my point, is I think representative property owner are basically the same in this situation. That's why the emphasis here was sort of like, why, why are we emphasizing that? Because I don't think that's really what is meant by everything I read in here. Because we use the term owner applicant and they just kind of bouncing and out of our code all the time.
Okay.
It's like a lot of our code. I'm sure the Greenway permitting process wasn't necessarily written with an expansion of a bridge in mind either, but it's there.
Do you have other water resources questions?
My comments have already been said.
Oh.
I was going to just agree with Randy and Rick really as far as the property owner hires a registered agent to make the application. And that's really what we accept as the property owner. And I would agree with Heidi as far as de-emphasizing that since it is an issue in some of the other parts of the appeal, whether or not certain members of government can authorize something or sign something on behalf of that jurisdiction. I think we should be consistent.
So does that occur there on that, on page 13?
Yes.
Where it's underlined there, is that referring to, so is there another-
On the next page also.
I'll take the italics off.
Yeah, of course, yeah.
I think it stands on its own without the emphasis.
Simply properly submitted.
Are there any other questions or comments in regards to the water resource question that you came across? It's like a head nods. Okay, so do we at this point want to start going through them all, or do you want to move on to discuss the geological?
Are there big points or did you ignore?
Well, there was the two we had. And then I don't know if we could go ahead and discuss appeal item, the last one, which is, since we had questions there, yeah.
Did you cover 10?
The ownership or is that just on-
Yeah, I want to, I'd like to talk about issues three and four.
Yeah, or, okay.
We'll come back. Okay, all of them. What's in the geotechnical?
Okay. Okay, so on page 16 of the AIS, under the 12th assignment of error, was the, those were the hearings official addresses, the geotechnical requirements. And in summary, the hearings official kind of notes that there was differing opinions provided during the hearing and that the, the appellant raised several issues and that he then felt that the applicant though provided enough evidence to make him comfortable that they'd met the burden of the standard. And so that was the basics of that assignment of error. I don't know if there's questions in regards to that.
Steve, this bridge is under the jurisdiction of the city of Eugene.
The bridge is the city of Eugene and then the underlying land is Lane County.
But in the, or one of these reports, it talks about public work staff concurred with the initial geotechnical assessment. Was that city public works or county public works?
That was city public works with, then we'd also get a referral from Lane County and they didn't.
Okay.
They didn't raise objections to it.
You know, reading the hearings official, not being in a position to say which is right or which is wrong, I think the fact that the Eugene city public works department concurred with the geotechnical report, it's their bridge. They're the guys that have to ultimately be responsible for how this thing is built. That to me lends credence to the hearings official's decision to go ahead and go in favor of the report submitted by the applicant.
I'm in agreement with Randy on that. And I think too, there's a condition in the hearings officer's findings that, you know, final engineering work has to be done. And of course, our code requires that all the necessary work to build a bridge has to be done before they're going to let them build an additional portion of a bridge. So I'm fine with the fact that dueling, dueling professionals can duel on a lot of issues and so on. And I think I'm with Randy that if we get approval from the people responsible to give these approvals, then I'm comfortable with the fact that it was an appropriate report and accepted by the hearings officer as a basis for findings.
Um, I'm a little uncomfortable with this topic just because of my own experience. And I'm not comfortable with what I can say about this here now. I'm, and I would think that anything I might say would be considered new evidence. So, you know, it's, I'm in a real quandary here. So I would just say that I would feel much better if there was a condition that there would be further geological analysis, maybe even using a different geotechnical firm. And I will, if there's a place or time for me to give my reasoning without getting into trouble, then I'd be happy to do that. But if we can agree that there should be further, that would be a condition.
Hi, I'm sort of curious about where, where in the hearings official rationale for deciding the way he did on this issue, he would make issue. Because if you want to make a condition, as I understand it, we have to-
Mm-hmm.
About why the process the hearings official went through, like the right process.
Yeah, and that might be construed as new evidence, so.
One of the other difficulties in crafting conditions, you have to be sure that the condition is clear and objective and doesn't require later decision maker to use discretion in determining whether or not the condition's been met or not.
Mm-hmm.
So while you could, let's say you could require an additional report, imposing any boundaries or specifications for that report may be difficult if, at a later point, an individual's going to have to say, yes, it met it, or no, it didn't. Also, if you attach a condition, one of the other things you have to do is you have to show which criterion required it. And I think in this case, you have a criterion requiring geotechnical analysis that you could tie it to. But just for your background, that's what you'd need to do. So probably your point's the right place to start, what specifically in the hearings official's decision constitutes an improper evaluation of the application or an inconsistency with a criterion, and then kind of sort of discussion around that.
Well, I guess it was just that, you know, weighing the two. I'm going with this one, you know. And I would not want to be in that position, you know, when I have two professional geotechnical reports, trying to decide which is the right one to go with. I suppose, I, Littwick, how long has he been doing this? I mean, it seems to me, I might have wanted to go back and do some research before I just came to that conclusion. And I don't know how much research was done, like weighing various geological reports with whatever developments have happened or not have happened because there were conflicting geological reports. And one, you know, maybe the decision was made with the appellant or the, against the development.
You know, and in the, and these are in the record, so we can talk about it. But in the original tentative PUD, if you remember, when the, that came in front of the planning commission, where the, it was the same engineering firms and the, and they also had issues when they were looking at the development site over where they're actually going to build the buildings. And in that case, the- And in that case, the hearings official provided conditions of approval, same firms, same arguments, and he somewhat sided with geoscience, saying, "KNA, you need to change your, you need to change your report to address these issues." And he didn't in this case, so that might be some level of.
Comfort?
Comfort.
We've got a few people on our queue.
I think the way that I read those reports, and the hearings officer's finding was kind of two things. One is that KNA did an acceptable report that was read by staff and approved by staff, and then the geo one came in and sort of questioned things that KNA came back and answered, and the hearings officer said that in his belief, those were answered correctly and so on, and that I think that part of the condition two for the hearings officer was sort of derived from some of that discussion, where it's conditioned upon a variety of engineering construction agreements, and having the city, of course, approve all construction diagrams and everything else. My reading of the geo report was there were some questions raised that were difficult to answer until you actually get in and start doing a lot of the work necessary to put together the construction and engineering documents and everything else, realizing we haven't seen any of that, but it's discussed. And I'm sure the city staff doesn't want geo companies going out and digging up a whole toe of a hill along one of our overpasses to go find out what the ground really is until such time they're ready to start all the correct excavation and so on. So, I would be fine if we needed to strengthen condition two for your concern, but I think part of what I'm reading is that we got a geotech report for this particular thing that dealt with the issues of trying to expand an overpass and build the correct overpass by the correct engineering techniques and construction requirements and everything else, realizing that it's being, it's going to saddle up next to an existing bridge, and sat there for decades and decades and decades, and still functions as well as I assume it did when they first built it. So, I'm okay with the hearings officer's decision on this, that they got an acceptable report, particularly after additional information was supplied by KNA, by questions raised, and again, if necessary, we could maybe figure a way to strengthen condition two.
I guess I just want to, this is going to be a little repetitious, because I think Rick covered it, but I guess to me, remembering where we are in time is important in deciding whether we need to attach additional conditions, which I'd be opposed to. One is that this is a permitting and study phase of it, it's not the detailed design phase. And so, I think that's one important time. The other important time issue is that we're going to build a new bridge, effectively, next to another bridge that's been there 35 years, so we know that a bridge can be safely built there. So, to me, those two time-related elements, to me, very clearly support that the hearings official did properly evaluate, and did make a decision consistent.
Can I ask staff a question? So, my recollection, I'm paging through these, the requirement for geotech is actually just a requirement that a report be submitted by a professional with proper credentials. That's it, is that right?
That's the basics, and then it lists several things that they need to.
Include.
Include in the report.
So, it really is largely and purposely written as sort of a, you hire a professional that is licensed as we require, and then we check and make sure that professional has come to these certain conclusions or provided us with certain information, which really makes it difficult to get at concerns about, if in fact, in a particular situation, you had concerns about the real on-the-ground qualifications or veracity of a particular professional, this criterion doesn't really allow you to go and look into that stuff. It's largely a matter of code, in part because the city doesn't hire geotech, we don't have on-staff geotech professionals that we do, but not to the degree that we require these professionals to be. So, it makes it hard to get at the concerns I'm hearing you express.
Yeah, that's another discussion, too.
Randy?
Yeah, and I'd just point out that in the findings here, it does talk about adherence to the report recommendations or subsequent recommendations will be required during the subsequent private engineering process. So, there is yet, as Jeff was indicating, that it's going to follow. To me, that's the next condition that's already incorporated in the findings.
And that also is a key that, in most cases, where you would have a, I guess, a bridge could be in a greenway, obviously, because it's a bridge across something, so if it's a Willamette, it's going to be a greenway permit, but there would be, all other road improvements would go through the PEPY process, even if there wasn't this previous Willamette greenway process, and they'd at that time make sure that the construction met all the standards, and that process is still coming, so.
Just in response to everything, I just want to go on record saying that I'm going to go ahead and sign off on this reluctantly, but given what you said, Emily, about the code and all, and that there's more to come on this topic, I'm going to let it go here. So, I'm good with it.
Any other comments about? Go back to the beginning?
Sure.
Talk about them, Randy.
Would like, yeah, I would like to address three and four.
Well, you only talked about one and two, right? Oh, no, you have more things you want to talk about.
And it really, it really comes down to Emily, if legal review of this whole chain of who's authorized to sign off on whose applications as landowner is consistent with your review. I mean, it was the city, the hearings official confirmed by the planning commission that ordered this improvement to be made to the bridge. And so, for whatever authority we have over the jurisdiction of the bridge, it's a city mandate for the developer to improve it. And so, it's kind of like saying, I mean, that was, that was not just, "Here, you're okay to go apply for this," it was, "Go apply for this." So, is there any legal question on the chain of authority in your mind? We want to Luba proof this thing now.
Well, I'm sure that, I'm trying to think what I can say that's on the record. I don't have legal concerns about the ways the hearings official resolved this, and you make a good point with respect to the city, to the extent there's a county issue, you may not be able to make the same argument, but I feel confident, this is definitely a question that I would rather ask Luba than set a precedent of requiring more from a legal perspective.
Thanks. I guess when I looked at the ownership, it was interesting, I believe I can do this because we've talked before, the city charter, city code, land use codes, and everything are part of the record as general. And in reality, the city by charter represents us as the people, and we actually own all of that land. So, the argument would have to be that every citizen would have to sign off on that document, I suppose, because the city truly represents our interest as our public agencies. So, it's not really the city that is ownership of that property, correct?
Yeah, I mean, you could get into quite a philosophical discussion. Overall, you know, we want to make sure that you don't have one citizen applying for a subdivision on somebody else's property. You know, we need to guard against that sort of thing, and to the extent that it also applies, that we don't have some citizen applying to do something within a park, which we all own, but there does come a time when there are individuals who, if the city has a project, we apply for land use permits and sign, you know, depending on the nature of the application. But I just don't, I'm not overly concerned on this one, and to the extent I have any concern, I would like to have a Luba ruling that doesn't require the kind of signature requirements that the appellant proposes. And I, that's consistent with what planning's approach on this.
Thank you.
Other questions about the ownership? Okay, let's break out the fine tooth.
Okay.
Notice that one, the signatures should come in.
That comes in on issues three and four.
Heidi, are we going with thumbs up on these as we go through, or formal adoption, and what are we doing with each one?
Let's do the thumbs up, it sounded like Rick maybe wanted to.
Okay. Propose some additional findings. Okay, I start on page nine of the AS. And so, this is one we previously discussed, and so, Rick, are you going to propose some additional findings to?
Not on one.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything on one?
Thumbs up, thumbs down?
Okay. So, page 10, the second assignment of error, and that was in regards to the requirement for a goal exception.
The letter from the applicant dated April 12, 2011, I'm on page five of that document. The last couple paragraphs to me of that really, I thought, added a real discussion that added sort of some meat to our findings, and again, I don't need it to be, I'll wait for everybody to get there, yes.
She said on page five of the April 12?
Page five of the applicant's response, April 12, 2011. Sort of the last two paragraphs now here, his arguments. It seemed to me that that sort of, sort of added to staff's discussion, and gave some good supportive information.
Just to clarify, I'm not sure if you noticed, but we did incorporate that by reference in the final order. So, I'm on page 10 at the top, second paragraph, where it notes that, "For the reasons set forth in the Greenway decision, the April 5 staff agenda item summary, applicant's April 5 letter, April 12, et cetera." So, it's, the reference is there, and so, we've in part relied on that letter, and I guess I'm wondering, are you asking us to specifically insert findings there? Or we could, but don't know that it's needed.
If it tends to show the same level of emphasis, I'm okay with that reference, and I think that was part of my question. When this goes forth, because I haven't been to a Luba hearing, it's my, I always thought that really it dealt more with our findings and how they were laid out versus continual references to other pieces of data.
First of all, you should come, because it's pretty fun.
You've never sent me an invite, it was sort of like I didn't get an invite to the great wedding on Friday. Sent me an invite, I'll be gone.
And to be clear, the city is largely, we're filing, if this thing gets appealed, we, we actually didn't participate in oral argument on the last round, and I don't know that we will on this one, but we file briefs. Next time I'll invite you. But the reference to these letters is really sufficient to, it is a clear pointer to con the text that's in that letter. So, while you may want to strengthen it with some added text, it really doesn't strengthen it any more than this reference does. You could ask staff to maybe put in parentheses after the April 12, see page five, if that really gets to those specific provisions, but realistically, I don't know that it, I don't believe that it would add anything as far as level of strength in defending that Luba.
I don't need to have extra things done, probably take care of a few of the other ones.
And honestly, the conversation and your deliberations is part of the record, and so, you're saying this and generally hearing nobody disagreeing with you is also helpful.
A Luba hearing is more fun than planning commission.
Depends on who's on the other side.
Interesting view, what she thinks is fun.
It's hung around me long enough to know.
I got to go to one of these now.
All right, so, everybody in favor of sending Rick to Luba? All right, number three.
Will we thumbs up on that one?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you should go.
Okay, and so, then, so number, the third assignment of error is the assignment that talks about the hearings official should have required a, the applicant to own the property, or in a long way of saying that they, the wrong person signed the application. The hearings official went on to say that the, that the signatures that were provided with the application were sufficient.
Did you have anything?
Well, again, I guess I'll just, for sake of record, emphasize that, again, on page six of the applicant's, April 12, in the response, first paragraph of the response, I think it talks about, it goes on and talks about ORS 277.175, parentheses one. I read the, it's not going to be as bad as you, I actually read the ORS and studied it. And I would have to agree with the applicant here, is that it seemed, when reading that ORS, that it's pretty clear that the intent is what, is that you have somebody that's actually representing the owner, so that, again, we don't have people trying to develop on somebody else's property without them knowing about it. So, again, that's my reference point, I don't need it added.
Thumbs up? Okay. Number four?
Four? So, number four is the same issue, only that the authorizations that were provided weren't sufficient, and the hearings official basically relied on the fact that the people signed on behalf of the city, and that they wouldn't have signed if they weren't the property people to sign.
I want to just throw in, I mean, my take on this issue is that it actually goes to completeness review requirement, as to whether or not, when the application was first submitted, staff correctly deemed it complete. It's not phrased that way, but I would, if arguing at Luba, also assert that really, this isn't an issue for the planning commission to struggle over, it really is largely an issue as to whether it could be complete with the signatures that were submitted, just to get that on the record.
Well, just to follow up, our code generally says that the city manager's responsible, or the city manager's appointee for these things, which then takes it into departments and so on and so forth, so I think the strength of chain of command is there throughout our documents.
Thumbs up, thumbs down?
Okay. So, the fifth assignment of error is the assertion that because the improvement isn't in transplan, or is inconsistent with transplan, that the facility, that the hearings official erred by allowing it, and the hearings official basically relies on the past decision, the tentative PUD decision that went to Luba and was affirmed on that, that the, I guess that the, the new bridge doesn't need to be in transplan in order to be constructed, so.
We went over that in some detail in the initial hearing.
I wanted to add anything to that?
Just here, I agree with staff that I thought that this item of discussion was very vague, and there really wasn't, it wasn't pointed towards much information within the record, so. Part of the requirement is that whenever an appeal issue goes forth, that the appellant has to give us type of information which supports the conclusion, and this one, to me, was very vague in the overall writing.
Thumbs up? Thumbs down?
Number six. This has to do with the designation of the property as parks and open space, so the appellant asserted that the, because the area in question is designated as parks and open space, and the. as parks and open space in the metro plan, that it is required to be zoned open space and can't be used for transportation facilities. And the hearings official went on to go to the Wilkins area plan to point to text that talks about, right away, not being included in what things are designated. And that the Wilkins area plan kind of takes a finer grain look, and that the metro plan's really a higher level, metropolitan level document, not going to this level of detail. And I guess that's the basics on that one, those discussions.
I have just a little point in, because I thought in the letter, I see that it's incorporated by reference, but I thought in the letter it was a little bit. Kind of confused the language a little bit between designation and designation, where it might be designated, open space, which is not known. But it seems like in the letter, those terms were confused. But I like how it's written here, where it doesn't confuse that.
Okay. You like how it's written in the?
In the final order.
Okay.
Yeah. So I just, you know, for the record or whatever, if we're incorporating the letter as part of support, I just wanted to clarify that I thought it was a little backwards in the applicant's letter.
Okay.
Applicants?
Yeah. I just think another comment here is that when we talk about the metro plan, if you look at it, the metro plan is actually, like you said, the 30,000-foot level, where you're looking at planned designations over entire mapped area. And the official map doesn't show all the little streets as non-zoned or non-planned lands. It was never intended to be that way. And actually, I think the Wilkins refiner plan goes beyond, let's see, is this new evidence? Beyond other plans, because most of them don't actually talk about that.
Okay.
All right, thumbs up, thumbs down?
And then we, on to seventh assignment of error. That's the WR one that we previously discussed. So we already have that will deemphasize the, or provide by the property owner language, two locations.
Thumbs up, thumbs down?
Okay, on to eighth, their assignment. Okay, and that has to do with the, that the use provides the maximum landscaped area, open space and vegetation between the activity and the river. And that was part of the, where's the river discussion that we had. Are you fine with that?
Any other additions or comments? Thumbs up, thumbs down? Nine?
And the ninth one is the requirement for pedestrian connections to the river. And that's one we always previously discussed, that the, it has to also do with the location of the river.
In some of the maps that were shown, is, make sure I get the right one. When we talk about connections, I guess the term connection myself, in my mind, means you have to connect to something. And it's interesting, because the drawings that were supplied showed that there was no sidewalks or anything anywhere to connect to. So I found that to be interesting as I went through that, that there's an argument here about it doesn't, it's not showing connections to things, but yet there was nothing ever shown anywhere in the record that there was something to connect to.
There's a little wormhole I think.
Well, no, Heidi makes the right point. At some point in time, if there's a connection intended, you know, it's like building a sidewalk out of nowhere.
Okay, thumbs up, thumbs down?
Okay, then moving on to the 10th assignment of error. And that has to do with the, one of the metro plan policies and the uses that are compatible with the water feature. And the hearings official found that the, I guess, the use of it, area for transportation purposes wasn't overall changing, that this was a transportation facility also, and that it wasn't, the policy didn't preclude the transportation facility. And that's one we have a fix to the, to the number on the third to last line there.
I guess I would just add that the expansion of this bridge could be looked upon as an enhancement, because it'll move traffic easier through the whole neighborhood. If you have to go over it, you understand that.
Okay. Thumbs up, thumbs down?
Okay, that's one we also previously discussed, had several standards that are addressed in it, that two of them have to do with the, regarding the definition of the river. And then one of the other standards that the hearings official addressed also was that the adjacent habitat is protected sufficiently.
Questions or additions here?
Number 12, and that was the geotechnical analysis requirement that was addressed under number 12. Was any further questions or discussions?
Get my pry bar?
There was the discussion about what are the conditions we strengthen to change? Should that be done before we kind of get into a motion?
With regard to, there was some discussion around geotechnical, but I think that...
I think I let that rest, because when she pointed out the code on that, it didn't seem really appropriate, so.
I move the planning commission affirm the decision of the hearings official for conditional Willamette Greenway permit approval for Good Pasture Island, off-site transportation improvements, city file WG 10-3, and adopt the final order.
Second?
I'll second. I was looking at Emily, she looked like she was, had was getting ready to go somewhere.
Do we have any discussion on this?
Just whether or not we needed to include the phrase with modifications, because I think there was.
Do those kinds of...
It would alter minor things.
Yes, I guess we could clarify what changes will...
Well, you've already walked...
De-emphasizing that those two sentences, I guess, then I would amend that to say with a lot of patience, de-emphasizing.
Give me a second. You might as well, you look well. So it sounds like Commissioner Randall entered your motion and adopted the final order, did the proposed revisions, de-emphasizing...
Orders provided by the property owner on AIS page 13, second to last paragraph.
And the...
14. Saying phrase, orders provided by the property owner, off the first paragraph.
Second.
Any further discussion? Does it favor? I suppose. Question plus two?
May we give these back to you?
Oh, yes.
Send them to Luba.
Yeah. Do you want me to keep those?
Sure, they're going to come your way anyway. I'll, I'll just give them.
No, it's really helpful at the end of... You have to file with Luba if there is an appeal. Everything that was placed before you were rejected by you. So I'd love just to see it handed directly from one of the commissioners to staff, because then we know exactly what you had. So we only need the one set, unless you want...
Let me double check what's in there. Yeah, exactly. Something works.
Oh, yeah, they might do that, but my purposes...
As far as sign...
There you go. The right ones are in there now.
Okay, item three on the agenda, this from staff.
I have one item. So there is a requirement that came out of the, if y'all can remember back to the Walnut Station, adoption of the Form-based Code and the special area zone. There was a policy that came out of that that asked that staff come back to the planning commission with an evaluation of the parking, or the event parking district, and how it was working to protect the neighborhood from development in Walnut Station. And that came about as part of, right at the end, as part of the adoption when it came to the city council. So the date is set for that was the end of this month. We have been working with the neighbors and university on getting something together. So towards the end of this week, you'll be getting a report from staff that's going to be, it's a joint report. The neighbors actually have it right now or are looking at it. And, but what the recommendation that's going to come out of it is that staff come back to you again in the future, because there hasn't been enough development, development's not at a stage where we can tell yet. And so just wanted to give you a little bit of context about what your, what your email will be. And so you're not really wondering what, where the heck did this come from? So it's that requirement. There's a very similar policy that also said after 50,000 square feet of development occurs, that's in the process of occurring right now with those apartment complexes going in there. So that's the gist of what you'll be getting. And then we'll probably just bring it up at a future date, then also to see if you, once you have a chance to read it and get your thoughts about the, what's in the report and the recommendation, then we can come back to you and see how you want to proceed. The requirement came about because the Walnut Station, because we're trying to do intense mixed use there, if you remember, the parking requirements were, are pretty, or the minimums are pretty low. And so that's where the neighbors wanted to be sure that there's some check-in to make sure that it's not negatively impacting the neighborhood. So that's kind of the intent of it. So just wanted to give you a heads up on that, so.
Maybe you could fill me in a little bit, too, on the new commissioner process?
Interviews? I don't have the dates off the top of my head, but I believe middle of June, I think they're set for making their decision on all the boards and commissions at the council meeting. I forget the exact...
June 13th?
13th. So this is the first year where they really try to coordinate them all together at the same time. It's been kind of a little more haphazard in the past. The idea would be that they would be conducting interviews before that. But they, they also have different protocol for how they deal with that review process, especially with incumbents. So that's kind of their discretion still to determine if there'll be interviews, and if so, how that'll be conducted prior to the 13th. I don't know. I think they just received kind of formal packets, if I remember right, last week, I believe. So they'll start that process as we speak, in going through all the different boards and commission candidates.
Any items from the commissioner?
Three things. Heidi, I was scheduled to attend the university community liaison committee meeting this afternoon. I'm tied up with the envision Eugene meeting. So are you going to go? Very good, okay. Recently, the planning process took some bad publicity in the register guard about a week ago or so, when the Camus Country Mill was applying for a permit. And the owners said it was kind of a tough process and discouraging. And I'm just wondering if there's any lessons to be learned there that we might want to review in the future sometime about how that process went. So I'll share that with you.
Whoops, sorry. Thanks.
And finally, on a positive note, looks like the West University, South University, and Jefferson Westside neighborhoods are finalists for a National Neighborhood of the Year Award from the Neighborhoods USA Association. I think Jefferson Westside might have won that last year.
Not nationally.
Not nationally. Okay. Anyway, they're finalists this year, and they'll find out the end of May, is my understanding. So, and it has a lot to do with the whole infill ICS process, so, anyway.
Tough question. Staff, as far as the CDs regarding any of these developments that are likely or very possibly going to Luba, I just gave back two CDs for Good Pasture. Do we have more that I should go try to find?
I think in this case, there was only the two.
Okay.
I shouldn't say only, but there's one on one.
Do you actually want to physically get them back, or?
No, it's not.
My shredder.
No, we can't reuse them, but...
Think you can reuse the cases?
Yeah.
And they hold on to them, if there is an appeal, you may need them again if there were to be a remand? So it's possible.
We always get fresh copies, too.
Yes, trying to do the...
Do that less.
Full faith and confidence in you, Emily, to Luba proof this thing.
She enjoys it so much.
It's good to like your job, eh?
Yeah. One more question. Regarding the reusable CDs, I know they're more expensive, how mu, I mean, how much more expensive than the...
Are you doing a triple bottom line analysis?
Yes, I am.
Very good.
I mean, in the long run, it could be...
Hopefully, a good sign is we're not printing a lot of CDs at this point for you.
Yeah, right.
Actually, the state uses the FTP process.
Yeah.
Where you can just go in and download everything. You know, you set up a file, you stick everything in it, and then we just go on and download what we want.
Talk to Luba.
You can't do that?
Well, it's very difficult. We're entering into a new age, because we have to submit everything that was placed before and not rejected by you. And at this point, it's not clear if we, at least with the CD, there's a physical, there's still a physical thing. And we've had, we've had to really forge the way with those. We need to get to the point where the rules really specifically allow what you're talking about. But, you know, we're the city to try it.
Yeah, I mean, because...
But I, you know, I would hate to see us get remanded, because we did that. So...
Well, I would ask again also that we get notification that we have information online, and I go on and I get it, and the stuff I want to print, I print, and the other stuff I leave on computer to read. And then you folks nicely mail me a copy of, a paper copy for everything. And so I end up with usually two.
Yeah.
And I thought we sort of said that's...
Not to get a paper copy.
Yeah, it sounds like you just did.
I'm requesting again not to get a paper copy.
Sometimes it takes you one else while we're at that, that already hasn't.
My only request is that I get my paper copy before the meeting, but I know that doesn't have anything to do with you.
That's really odd, dear.
I think it's mostly related to the mail...
Your delivery man, yeah.
I think it doesn't do anything. Well, if we're talking about these things, what about a jump drive? I mean, can we have, like, designated jump drives, and we can just kind of, like, kick them back and forth instead of making CDs?
We could definitely talk about these things, and should be, you know, we're all...
That would satisfy that transfer, but then would also...
What I ought to be able to do is then file the record, which is the jump drive, and give that to them. But the records that I have to... The records that I have to file are paper, one-sided.
You probably have to sign...
Well, actually, no, they're not one-sided at Luba, but they need to catch up.
You probably have to sign a document that says this also, we're taking care of the paper, the Nudge Act.
I could not sign that with respect to these records.
I mean, if you guys aren't going to give us iPads, then you could at least...
You don't need to know on that right now.
I have noticed one or two of the city councilors have iPads.
I'd like a two of them.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, well, we're adjourned.